I have six o'clock and I'll call the October sixth, two thousand twenty-five Border County Commission meeting to order. At this time, I do recognize we have a quorum. Vice Chairman Thomas, will you lead us in our invocation?
We join us as our latest employer. I most count unto heavenly Father, we come to you today grateful for this opportunity to live in a free country, dear God. We thank you for those that have laid their lives on the line so we may come in and and live in this free country. We want to thank you for all our first responders that are watching us around the clock. We want to thank you for all of our soldiers that are watching us and keeping us all safe. We ask you to be with this board, God, help us make decisions that will make Person County a better place to live. And we ask you just to watch over all of us and take care of us as only you can. We thank you for going to the cross and dying so we may have eternal life. And we ask you just to keep us all safe. Forgive us all our sins. In your name I do pray. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Royster, will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its sanctions, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the board, you have the agenda before you. Is there any discussion or adjustment to said agenda? Haven't here none? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Any further discussion? Haven't here none? All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda's been approved. Item five A, addition of Thomas Place to be added to the data base of roadway names for E nine one one dispatching. Do I have a motion to go into the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion. All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're now into public hearing. Ms. Long?
Good evening, Commissioners. I come before you tonight to request the addition of Thomas Place, a private roadway to our E nine one one address of roadway names within the county. The owners of a previously unused single wide have decided to reconnect power and begin using the home. The driveway to this home will then actually serve four houses, which does invoke the ordinance regulating addresses and road naming within the county. The family is the Thomas family, which I believe may even be represented here tonight for another purpose. And they have chosen as their name unanimously Thomas Place. That does meet all local and state requirements, and my recommendation would be to approve the roadway name.
Any questions to for the presenter? Do I have a motion to come out of the closed session? I mean, public hearing?
So moved.
All right. All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. The ayes have it. We're now out of the public hearing. What does desire the board?
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Any further discussion? Haven't here none? All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion's been approved. Thank you so much. Item five A, excuse me, five B, text amendment TA dash zero seven two five revised for adoption of the amendments to the solar energy system ordinance. Before we, I'm gonna ask the county attorney to go into comments about this before we start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So late last week, I spoke with the attorney for the folks who have proposed a solar text amendment, and they said that they would like to ask the board to continue this matter so they can continue their community outreach. I think they acknowledged it's a complicated ordinance, and they want to make sure folks understand what's being proposed. So they have asked the board to open the hearing and then continue it this evening without any testimony being taken. And just so the public knows, that is a very common practice with local governments. If we open the hearing, then the board can simply continue it to a date certain if they choose to do so. And just one other thing, I believe that citizens may have signed up to speak tonight. Know that your name will be kept, and we will allow more folks to speak or sign up when the hearing is held. So do not feel like if you do not speak tonight, you will not have an opportunity to speak.
All right. Do I have a motion to enter the public hearing?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion. All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. The ayes have it. We're now in the public hearing. Do I have a motion to continue this public hearing until the first meeting in February of two thousand twenty-six?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. The ayes have it. Motion's been approved. The public hearing has been continued. Madam Clerk, will you please, as we get close to that timeframe, do a normal announcement like we did for the previous time?
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate the people being here. It shows that you're passionate about this issue, and it's a very important issue, and I fully understand that. And do appreciate the people that did sign up. We definitely want to make sure your voice is heard when the time has come, but I do appreciate your presence being here speaks volumes. So thank you so much, and and any other commissioner have any other comments at this time? Thank you so much for being here. All right. Item six, informal comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any to sign up?
Yes, sir. We have two individuals.
We have two individuals? We have a ten-minute period set aside for public comment period. I do remind the speakers to engage the commissioners, not the audience. Do not address a commissioner as an individual, only as a board, and be respectful of the time. We have ten minutes. There will be five minutes per speaker given to this, too. Madam Clerk, can you call out the first name?
Yes, sir. May I please have Coach Michael Johnson? And if I can instruct our team to please set the timer for five minutes.
And, yes, sir, please. And can the chairman hear the timer, please? The buzzer. Thank you.
Hey, how you doing, board? My name is Michael Johnson. I am the head football coach of Person High School. I am born and raised here, county native. I've been here all my life, went to school, came back, and ended up coaching here. And, you know, certain things worked out, and I became the head coach here. The thing that I wanted to bring before the board is, in my time here as a little guy, we had something called Pee Wee football. And Pee Wee football was an important building stone to Person County. It was a important building block to Person High School and to the middle schools. One thing I want to invest in, especially coming back as the head coach, is trying to bring that back for our kids. For one, at the high school, we engage in every student having something. Every student having a sport that they can relate to, every student having something that they can do. I believe that, you know, we're not doing our kids a service by not having Pee Wee football. They should have sports. They should have every sport they could pick from, every sport they could choose from. Pee Wee football is a great building block for football in general. It helps build fundamentals. It helps get kids out. It helps get them active. It helps just build them up in character and discipline as itself. Football is a game of discipline. You have to have it. And coming from the high school, I preach this because right now I get kids, and those kids don't have the fundamentals of football. Right now, I'm trying to compete in the conference. That's very, very tough with having to teach kids that haven't picked up the basis of anything in football. If you haven't noticed, Person High School has a beautiful, brand-new stadium, and it's a brand-new, brand-new football stadium. And, you know, I feel like this is a county that hasn't been the justice of getting kids prepped right for football because we don't give that option for them. Me, as a coach, I'm willing to do anything to help. I'm willing to put myself in positions of helping coach, helping put things together, helping put a plan together for us to get few football somehow back in the county. I believe every kid should have something for them. Every kid is not gonna be a soccer kid, not gonna be a baseball kid. Every kid is not gonna be a basketball kid. You have some kids that solely only play football. Me, growing up, that was my thing. I played football, and that's the only thing I wanted to play. That's all I knew. So I feel like, you know, we need to bring it back. It needs to be something put in place for our kids. I feel like flat football just isn't enough because you still don't get those fundamentals. The only way you get better at something is repetition. Baseball is proof of that. Playing baseball, you get so many reps, you have no choice, but your body gets good at it. Football's the same way. Repetition, learning how to tackle, running proper things, learning running mechanics, it all goes into one. And for me, I'm here to help. Anywhere I can help, anywhere we can put anything in place, any plan, I'm willing to do it. Just setting up the football program to be able to compete in the future. I have some really good kids this year, and those kids have done great things, but I can only imagine if they had Pee Wee football as a staple before they even got to me, and then we were able to advance. I can only think of the things we could accomplish then. And that's pretty much where I'm coming from as a board. If we can find some way to put a plan in place, or we find something to bring Pee Wee football back, I am all for it. You have my support. I'm willing to be a part of it any way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Chris Dickerson.
Thank you all for your time. First of all, appreciate that, and I'm not gonna take five minutes, I promise. As you can see, you can probably tell that I'm gonna be speaking about the same thing Coach Johnson is. I'm the head coach in Northern Middle School. I'm also a full-time police captain here in Roxboro Police Department. I was born and raised in Person County. I've been here all my life. I'll be forty next Monday. So Coach Johnson is a hundred percent correct. What I am seeing with the lack of Pee Wee football in this county is their seventh grade year, when they're eligible to play middle school football, they're coming in green as grass. They literally don't know how to tackle. They don't know anything about football other than what they see on a video game or on Sundays when, and Saturdays when people are playing football. That does not coincide with what they need to be learning, and the biggest staple that I can take away from that is the discipline. Discipline in all sports is absolutely needed, but football for sure because it can be dangerous, obviously, as everyone knows. The issues that I'm facing just this season right now with the lack of discipline. But I am dedicated in making sure that the students and our student athletes here in this county are disciplined, so I'm dedicating myself to be able to put forth the best effort that I can for these kids. We have to remember that our future is in their minds right now, and that can be a scary thing to think of right now. But it's sometimes discipline for these children is only occurring during sports, after school. So that's all I ask, just to consider it. Please bring it back. I did coach Pee Wee for two years before I went to Northern in two thousand nineteen, and I've been there ever since. I do love this sport, and I know, like Coach Johnson said, we are both willing to do anything that we can to assist in the rebuilding of that program. I know the equipment and everything is a funding issue. The majority of the equipment that is there is probably outdated. It parks and wrecked, if they even still have it, but just would like to see if we can give it a chance and see if we can bring it back. I know a lot of people are interested in coaching. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our informal comment period.
All right. Thank you. Item number seven, discussion, adjustment, or approval of a consent agenda, or is there any discussion or adjustment to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move for approval of the consent agenda with the adjustment to the item E to have that language reflect the same language for all nonprofits.
Is there any questions concerning Commissioner Werburn's motion? Haven't here none? All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda's been approved. U Business, item eight A, Veterans Council First Responder Memorial, Brian Hart.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So I'm here today alongside the Veterans Council to present their proposal for a first responder memorial to be placed at the Huck Sandsbury Complex. A summary of their proposal, as submitted by the president of Person Veterans Council, includes that they believe such a tribute to our first responders is well overdue. They also believe that a significant majority of the population would support building a memorial to honor our dedicated first responders. Person Veterans Council has received support from the Recreation Advisory Board during their June meeting and is now presenting this proposal to the Board of Commissioners for your approval. They also asked that the board partner with them in covering some of the costs associated with building the proposed memorial, which, there's kind of a pictorial of that included in your agenda packet. Their initial cost estimate for the project is roughly four thousand dollars, and their ask of Person County is, in addition to the project approval, is for a one-time contribution of one thousand. The proposed placement or location or site for this memorial is on the, where the Charters of Freedom memorial is, or where that display is, on the other side of that kind of, I mean, they would face one another. I'm sorry. So that is their proposal. That is their request. John Hill, though he is not here this evening, Park and Recreation Director, he is also in support of this proposal as it was presented to his Recreation Advisory Board back in June. And I will turn it over to President Whitlow for any additional comments.
Thank you, Andrew Hart. I'd just like to, like he said there, we feel this is long overdue. What prompted this a couple of years back, well, since I've been involved with this group? When I travel now, I look at veterans' parks, veterans' memorials in different towns, and I've noticed several had first responder memorials, one as close as Yanceville. They've got a very nice marble stone, huge, that recognizes their first responders, every branch of their first responders. And, you know, of course, there's a glaring omission here in my mind that if Yanceville can do this, if Castle County can do this, why hasn't Person County done this? And what I determined, best I could, was nobody's asked for it. Nobody's taken ownership of it and said, hey, we'll take this and drive it. And who better, I figured, to do that than the Veterans Council, with the relationships we have with our first responders here that we've tried to establish with the board here and with the citizens of the county. Why don't we take this, try to run with it? So we worked together, came up with a design that we felt would be complementary to the location that we feel would be appropriate. We can't put it in a park. If we could, we would. Our bylaws do not allow anything that is not directly related to veterans in the park. So if we could do that, we wouldn't be here tonight. We'd already be working on this. But it needs to be on county land, on public land, and it seems like Huck Sandsbury gets as much traffic as probably anywhere in this county. And directly across the Charters of Freedom, and that's part of what prompted the design. This, we felt like, would be very complementary to the Charters of Freedom. It would preserve the daughters of the American Revolution flowerbed and what they already have there, because it could be built around it without having to disturb that. And as you can see, we've talked to our first responder organizations here. We've had them on board through the design process, through talking through it. We wouldn't come to you guys if they weren't on board. So we have their support. Now we're asking for your support. And do you have any questions?
Any questions from board members?
I'd just say, as the wife of a first responder, thank you all for recognizing what they do and for leading this effort.
All right. What does desire the board?
Like, I'll motion for us to approve with granting the Veterans Council the one thousand dollars needed toward this memorial for first responders.
And the use of the public?
And the use of the public property.
All right. County Manager, will this come out of contingency?
We do have available funding in contingency.
Commissioner Royster, were you in your motion for the money to be, to come out of the contingency funding for the county?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could we amend the motion for the entire amount? They said the whole project was four thousand dollars?
That's a rough estimate. Where that is, assuming we're able to work with some local organizations and get some of the concrete and brick items donated.
Commissioner Royster can't amend her motion, or you can provide a substitute motion if you desire to do so.
I would amend it to cover the four thousand dollars.
All right. I have a motion. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, do you have the motion?
I do, yes, sir.
All right. All in favor of said motion, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion's been approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Chairman's report, we got here pretty quickly. I do not have a report at this time, County Manager.
I would like to introduce the Commissioners, as well as the members of the public who are here, to our new planning director, who is in the audience tonight, Nish Trevetti. Will you please stand up? We are glad to welcome him to Person County. He started working with us last week on Thursday. And we have another new addition to our planning staff as well. Our planner, new planner, is Jay Jennings, and he started today. So I believe they will make a great team and look forward to working with them as we go forward.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Thomas?
I'll echo with a, thank you everyone for coming out tonight for the solar. And I hope we all come back in February and let your feelings be heard, be told, speak your mind. It's important that everyone come out and speak on that. I'm gonna thank everyone for coming out to Personality this past weekend. I thought it was a great turnout. A lot of people put in a lot of hard work and hours put into that day, and it was a good day. It was a beautiful day, and I want to thank all the chambers' hard work.
Commissioner Werburn?
Just a reminder about the leadership summit that's coming up October thirtieth at four o'clock in this room, which is a joint meeting, of course, of our board and the City Council and the EDC. Recalling my comments from last month about all the things that are gonna be coming down to the counties, cost to cover, that we may not have support from as we have in the past, leading and having aggressive economic development is really important. So I'm excited about this opportunity to come together with both elected bodies and the EDC to chart the course for the future.
Commissioner Royster?
Yes, I would like to just bring awareness to the community. We know that this month, October, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and our community has been impacted. It's unfortunate that a young woman, a young mother with three children, lost her life to domestic violence end of September, and I just wanted to, you know, the community know it's not, when it happens in one neighborhood, it's just not impacting that neighborhood. It's impacting Person County. And the reason that I am so passionate about this is because I never thought that anything like this would hit close to home until it happened to my niece. And her situation actually gained statewide media attention. And I just want the community not to forget, if you know something, say something. Don't blame the victim for not leaving because she just might as well, might be trying to save herself and her children, or himself and his children, because men are victims as well. But I just wanted to share that on today, that, you know, our county, you know, as a whole, we're all impacted when things like this happen, and it's not just one community. It can happen anywhere in this county. So let's just think of those who are impacted by domestic violence in the month of October.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The veterans have requested an update on the urgently needed facility inside the DSS building. The delay has been quite protracted, and it needs a completion date. And the urgency is, they don't have enough waiting room. They don't have enough office space. But particularly the fact that there's no privacy, and they're concerned about HIPAA violations. But particularly the fact that there's no privacy, and they're concerned about HIPAA violations when you have veterans in there and they're asking personal questions. So we need to, they stepped up for us, and we need to go ahead and do the same for them. I'd also like to mention that we have an outbreak of rabies in the county. I think we've had eight-plus cases or more. And I'd like to congratulate Mayor Newell for her well-deserved Star Award at the recent Car-Tar Council of Government banquet. And, uh, we had our football coach here, and I see the Rec Department is going to be doing a survey to gauge the, the, uh, participation and interest in the county for a football league. And I'd also like to, uh, address the fact that we're looking at reduced funding, like Commissioner Werburn spoke about, on the federal level and the state level. And I think we need to start looking at our budget and, and looking at ways to reduce our budget by maybe 10 to 15 percent for the 2026 year. Because if we don't, we're going to have a tax increase again, and I don't want to see that happen. So, I, I would like to, uh, encourage the County Manager to start looking for ways to do that, instead of waiting until we get to January, when we start having workshops, and it'd be a surprise to everybody. So that's, that's my comments. Thank you.
I would like to add, um, I did have the privilege of attending a DSS employee luncheon. Um, uh, I believe it was last week, and, um, I, uh, there are a lot of hard workers out there, and, um, it was an honor of, of, um, serving them fried, um, chicken, that's what I did. And, um, it's two years in a row, and so, but, uh, appreciate all that they do. Um, and, uh, it's a hard job. I understand it is. All right, at this time, do I have a motion to go into closed session number one? Per General Statute 143-318.11, for the purpose of to consult with the County Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege with the following individuals permitted to attend: County Manager Catherine Cathy, Clerk to the Board Michelle Solomon, and County Attorney TC Morpheus Jr., followed by closed session number two, per General Statute 143-318.1183, for the purpose to consult with the County Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to discuss matters related to the lawsuit, Person County v. Yarborough, with the following indivi- um, uh, individuals permitted to attend: County Manager Catherine Cathy, Clerk to the Board Michelle Solomon, and County Attorney TC Morpheus Jr. Do I have a motion?
Come in.
We have a motion. All in favor, please vote for saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're now in closed session. All right, we're now back in open session. Do I have a mo- uh, motion to adjourn?
So may, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.